Okay, now being a couple of minutes past 6 o'clock, I will call the June 18th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our agenda is committee and board appointments. We want to start, do we have Liz?
Yes.
I'm gonna hold to the time as much as possible because I know people were planning on coming to see you at 6:30. Thank you.
All right, so we've got Chris, Christine.
We didn't do this last week, huh?
No, we appointed her to the Old Colony Planning Council as Plimpton's representative, not as a member of Council on Aging.
Okay, so we have a Council on Aging is asking for the appointment of Christine Unaki?
Unaki maybe?
Unaki. To the Council on Aging until June 30th, 2018. Does that make a motion that we accept this?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
We have to reappoint everybody again next week.
Next week, yeah. Do we have, why don't we go right to correspondence?
Do you have any appointments for Pat Dillon?
I have that all right here.
Okay.
So for him, there needs to be one vote from effective immediately through June 30th, and then because of the nature of that position, we want to go right into the second vote for next year. We don't want to put that off.
Okay.
Okay. So this is appointment of Patrick Dillon to the Civil Defense Emergency Management Director's post. This will be through June 30th, 2018, and then we'll also have July 1st through June 30th, 2019. So I have a motion to approve these both?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I actually want you to sign first, and then we'll sign.
Also this to sign, it's just because where the chief's role is a contract position, Barbara and I worked on this today, just so that there's no confusion for him with respect to compensation. So we also need to sign this?
So we're all signing this?
Yes.
And that's just the stipend that's associated with this position?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, very much. And that's the stipend for that position. Thank you. And that goes back to you, Liz.
Thank you.
So the other agenda item we have is the old townhouse. Do we want to talk briefly about that?
I think we put it on in case we wanted to talk about the door.
Okay, that's right.
With the front door of the old townhouse?
Yeah, I guess maybe it's a question of whether it'd be this year's budget or next year's budget.
Probably next year's, I would assume. We've only got two weeks or something.
Yeah.
So we have the old townhouse that we've got CPA funding approved to redo all the clapboards, repaint the building, and do all the windows. These are 1950 windows fund primarily, so we're not tearing out the old ones. We're getting rid of things from 30 years ago. One of the questions came up was the door is in pretty bad shape, but we want to keep that same look. So I believe we've agreed that it should be part of maintenance. The town owns the building, so we should be doing that. And we estimated, I think it was a rough cost of about $1,000 to put in, to redo that door over the way it should be done, and then potentially put one of these locks. Looks like an old lock, but it gives you the, you can change the combination on it.
Do we have money left in this year's budget where we could swing it?
We may have a little bit in building maintenance.
Building and maintenance, we have enough fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could work with Barbara and coordinate with Steve Sorrow, I'm assuming he would be?
Yeah, and I think we ought to get some, get a strong figure before we actually vote, make sure we know exactly what it's gonna cost us.
Okay, so will Steve get the estimates then?
He can get the estimates.
Okay.
I'll talk with him first thing tomorrow.
Okay, and that still gives us time to vote it. I wouldn't think it would take too long.
No.
Hopefully he can find something that's in stock.
Couple of days, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll just carry that till next week then?
Yep.
Okay.
So we still have some time. Why don't we do correspondence, and then we'll jump into Ben Jamino.
I presume I'm taking minutes in his absence?
Could you? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
That's not completely trouble. It's all right.
So for correspondence, we have a response from the Board of Health as to why there are two assistants. Was this something that was maybe discussed last time? So to clarify, there is one health agent, Rob Tinkum, two assistant health agents, Kathy Drynan for health, housing, and food emergencies, and Amos Wood for septic inspections. And then the two assistants who are alternates only work when the health agent is either unavailable or on vacation. So there's no duplication of job duties.
Okay.
So we have that. We have a letter from Art Moran dated today. This letter is to inform you that I will not be a candidate for reappointment to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So that appointment will expire June 30th of this year.
Who is the alternate?
I don't even know that they...
We do.
Do they have somebody that's been actively?
Was it you, Mark?
It was me, and I resigned because one cannot be both on this board and ZDA.
Right.
I'm not sure whether they made another appointment.
I don't think they did.
We'll have to check next week.
Yeah, they've got some pretty important things brewing. We're gonna need to get somebody appointed.
Somebody ASAP.
Right away, yes.
So we'll work on that for next week. We have a letter here from Gary K. Samaro. Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, I am writing this letter to inform the board that I am extremely interested in becoming the next fire chief of the Plimpton Fire Department. If appointed, I will work closely with the board to make this department the pride of Plimpton. I have been involved in the fire service for the last 35 years. In that time, I have learned a lot. I have proudly served on the Plimpton Fire Department and the people of Plimpton since February of 2017 as a firefighter, paramedic, and incident safety officer. I am looking forward to talking with you on this matter. And this was received by the office on June 12th. And then we also have the latest version of the Plimpton Halifax Express, which had some great photos from Flag Day, as well as some more tales of old Plimpton.
Good. Okay, I think it's time we can just jump in now.
All right.
It's early, but...
Well, this discussion will probably still be going on at 6:30.
I would assume. So we have on the agenda Chief Benjamino, who has been our consultant for, as we've moved forward with the fire department in terms of the services, and he's here to give us an update on the progress to date, and we welcome you, Chief. Thank you.
Anybody mind if I move that table over here so I can put this stuff up?
No.
Sure. We also have the little podium, too, if that's more convenient.
Do we want to give him a mic?
I'm gonna give you a mic. I think it should.
Something for me to turn over?
No.
Thank you. So my name's Lance Benjamino, Fire Chief of Middleborough, and has offered some help to the town of Plimpton as a consultant to take a look at your fire department and your fire services as a whole. So on May 9th, 2018, I conducted my initial assessment of the fire department and their operations. I've identified numerous administrative deficiencies, incomplete personnel files, no record of corrie, sorrie records, or training records, or certifications that were readily available in a personnel file. There was incomplete rules and regulations, and I found that most staff did not have copies of the ones that did exist. Standard operating guidelines, there was no mission statement, and there was no organizational chart of how the fire department was actually organized, and who was in charge of what, and who reports to whom. There was no general orders or directives to guide their daily operations. There was no pre-fire plans or procedure to do so. The radio frequency that they currently operate on had expired in 2015, and we're currently working on an expired frequency right now. There was incomplete apparatus maintenance records, inventory, and no records of pump testing. There was no records of SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus, flow tests, or hydrostatic tests, or annual breathing air analysis for the firefighter's air that they breathe in. There's no record of SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus mask fit test for each individual that would be expected to wear such a mask. There was no automatic aid agreements for structure fires. There was mutual aid agreements, but no automatic aid for reports of structure fires. There was no, there is a, there is a training program, however, there was no comprehensive training program with associated individual evaluation forms. There was no measurement of what each person did for training, and whether they completed the task, or they didn't complete the task, and if they passed it efficiently. And then I reviewed the MRI study. It is quite the document to read, so I really tried to study the main parts. I met with the technical committee on three separate occasions. The committee categorized the MRI recommendations into priorities, high, medium, and low priorities. The last report that I saw, and I may be incorrect on this, but the last one that I saw, it had 20 high priorities. It had seven medium, 20 low, and three non-categorized. I've completed 15 of the 20 high, three of the seven medium, 14 of the 20 low, and all three of the non-categorized. I've addressed them or accomplished those in one manner or not. Then I conducted an assessment of the fire station, the actual building, found to be unoccupied. It had no fire alarm system, smoke detectors, or carbon monoxide system, and no real exit signs. There's poor ventilation in the generator or electrical room. There's poor housekeeping and lack of storage within the fire station. There's no bunk room or sleeping quarters. There's no vehicle exhaust system to clear the air for the apparatus when it's running inside the building. The kitchen is in some order disrepair. The apparatus floor needs to be resurfaced. There's a question about the electrical system or service. The apron or the pavement in front of the apparatus doors is collapsing, and it's a trip hazard for folks that walk across there. I found there was some excessive equipment. Many of these things were pointed out in the MRI study as well, so some of this is redundant, and I'll address each one as I go along. There was excessive equipment. I looked at the Red Cross trailer that was here that has been since returned to the Red Cross, and our shelter equipment has been moved into a Plimpton Fire Department-owned trailer. That is the only trailer that's out there now. The water buffalo that is, I don't know, 50 years old, maybe older, has been given back to the Department of Conservation and Recreation because I don't think the Plimpton Fire Department really has a use for that, and nor does it have the storage for that. There's an old air compressor that was removed from the building that was outside as excess surplus. That has since been removed as well with permission from your board to surplus those things. Engine 3, the vehicle that really is a jack of all trades but a master of none, that's out being repaired right now with the hopes to surplus that vehicle as well, which I'll get to a little bit later on in the presentation. I've taken a look at the storage facility. They have generator trailers, and they have, I think, three trailers with, two have generators that have never been mobilized. That's something that I'm gonna be looking at to possibly make room as well in the storage facility. And I also looked at the temporary housing, as you know, that big white building out near parking lot. So with all that said, I'm sure you're wondering where are we now? What progress do we have made, if we have made any? It's only been four short weeks or so, and with one week of me being on vacation. So in that time, we've created a mission statement, why do we exist? I've developed an organizational chart. All staff were required to reapply for their positions. All staff, current staff, has been corried and sorried, which is a criminal offenders' record information, and sexual offenders' record information. All that have qualifying corries and sorries have remained on the department. Those that did not are no longer with the department. I've created personnel files with applications, corrie-sorrie certifications, if they had any, and training records are in the personnel files. I've also developed a 25-page rules and regulations for the department that currently is a draft and has been given out to the staff to make their comments or recommendations and get back to me by next Friday. Also, the, it includes a social media policy, Plimpton Fire Department's social media policy, which has been a hot topic apparently in Plimpton. We also attached the town's sexual harassment policy. That also has been part of the rules and regulations. I've developed the initial standard operating guidelines, 1 through 6, which standard operating guidelines will be continuous, and hopefully whomever you get as a chief, or wherever, whatever avenue you folks take, the standard operating guidelines should be fluent and always changing and always developing with your department. So the first six that are very important first is check your apparatus, check your personal protective equipment, utilization of the incident command system, accountability for everybody that's on the fire ground, communications, and a mayday if you are into trouble. How do you get yourself out of that trouble? How do you call for help if you need to do so? We've also obtained a new fire frequency. It's not programmed as of yet today. Jeff Moran's here. We have the frequency, we just need to program it in the radios and the mutual aid. Towns, correct? We've installed bulletin boards for general orders and directives. However, none of those have been initiated as of yet, but they will be forthcoming for any firefighters that are in the room. We've developed apparatus inventory sheets for each piece of apparatus. I've developed apparatus maintenance record files, which contains maintenance records, registrations, and specifications for each piece of apparatus that's easily and readily accessible. I've instituted a pre-fire plan program for all businesses that I believe they did a test run with the historical building, correct? So all businesses will soon have a pre-fire plan for each business, and it's not an inspection, it's a pre-fire plan for fire safety and our response to the business to better serve the businesses. It's not an inspection, it's not a code violation inspection of any sorts. Early on, we adjusted the wage and personnel through your town meeting. You voted to change that to just firefighter status and deputy chief, and we corrected the standby versus the call-pay difference. We created a comprehensive training schedule with evaluation forms for each firefighter and each subject. I've secured firefighter 1-2 training for the 11 firefighters that do not have firefighter 1-2 certification through Plymouth County Fire Rescue Training Association. I've spoke to the Halifax Fire Chief, and initially he shared with me that the shared service grant would pay for those individuals to go to that. He has now stepped back on that a little bit, and is now checking with the state to see if that grant can actually be used for that if the town of Plimpton decides not to go with the shared services. So preliminarily, the shared services grant was gonna pay the $600 per person. Worst-case scenario is the town of Plimpton will have to pay $600 for 11 people. They have committed to a training, firefighter 1-2 training for Plimpton in September. Excuse me. All SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus, have been flow-tested and hydrostatically certified. Annual breathing air analysis has been completed and is posted on the air compressor. All Plimpton Fire Department firefighters scheduled to have the self-contained breathing apparatus mask fit test on June 19th and June 20th, correct?
Yes, sir.
IPS will be conducting those, so everybody will be properly fitted to a SCBA mask. I've also created an SCBA cylinder fill log as required through NFPA, which didn't exist as well. I've obtained automatic aid from all surrounding communities for reports of structure fires to address many of those issues that were in the MRI study. Halifax, Kingston, Carver, and the most difficult one to get a degree with was Middleborough. Sorry. That guy's tough. We addressed some of the excess equipment issues. Engine 3, as I said, that's being repaired, and it has been appraised through Brindle Mountain Fire Apparatus. The water buffalo has been surplus, the Red Cross trailer has been given back, the air compressor, et cetera, is what I said earlier. We're looking at the generator trailers that are in storage, and I'll get back to the engine 3 very shortly. Would anybody like to look at the SOGs or anything, the rules? I don't have copies right now, but these are preliminary. I don't know if you wanted to...
How about after? Can you just leave them with us?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
So I had, so the question of the occupancy of the structure, I contacted the state building inspector, Bill Hollicks. I also contacted the local building inspector, Tom Millius, both which met me at the fire station. We did a walk through the entire building. They inspected the building, and the consensus was it needs to meet the codes of when it was built, which was 1974. I've also obtained three quotes on vehicle exhaust systems. Actually, I didn't personally, but one of the firefighters graciously did this because he was doing a grant for it. Unfortunately, we didn't meet the criteria for the grant, but however, we do have three quotes. They range from $19,000 to $50,000. I would recommend the $19,000 vehicle exhaust system if we were to move forward with that. I've obtained an evaluation and a quote on the alarm system through Watch 24. They came out and did an extensive evaluation, and they gave me an itemized quote that I do have here, and that price was about $8,650, $8,650 to put pulse stations, smoke detectors, heat detectors, and CO detectors in what would be the living quarters, and heat detectors in the generator room as well. All that would be needed by code was $8,650. There is a monthly monitoring fee if you want it to be monitored. It's roughly $34 a month to be monitored, and he gave us a quote for whether it was monitored by hardwire or cellular. I obtained an evaluation, a quote for the electrical work, for the thermostatically-controlled fan in the generator room, in the electrical room. It gets overheated in there. If the generator runs, they have to open the door to keep it from overheating. So the electrician that I had come out, I had him look at the entire electrical system and look at a thermostatic-controlled ventilation system for that room. He also gave me a quote on changing out the lights to LED lighting on the complete right-hand side. If you're looking at the building as the right-hand side, the offices to the kitchen. If you're inside the building, obviously, it's on your left. It's to redo the lights and switches that need to be done, change them over to LED, more efficient lighting, and wire the fire alarm control panel, which would be in the front office, and that price was $5,300. I got a rough estimate, this is not an exact estimate, I'm still, excuse me, I'm still waiting for that, on epoxy apparatus floor, and that's roughly $17,500. That is not a priority, but if you're gonna do the work to the building, I think you should do that to take care of the apparatus floor. I requested an estimate on the apron in the front of the building. A DPW director currently said that the DPW could probably prepare it for us. I've requested a quote from Plymouth County Paving. I'll meet them there tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Unfortunately, I couldn't have it for you tonight. It's roughly 2,500 square feet that we're looking to have replaced, so I'm looking forward to that estimate as well. I received an estimate on kitchen cabinets and counter without, this is without labor, this is just stock. I don't know, do you want me to itemize the list, or you want me to just tell you what the end result is, what I looked at, and the number that we come up with? It's either way, I'll do it either way.
How far down are you on the list?
Three-quarters of the way.
Okay, why don't we just keep going? It's interesting.
So the estimate for cabinet, replacing the cabinets and the counter, this is without labor again, is roughly $3,500. Estimate on kitchen ceiling tiles that need to be replaced is $250. I've obtained a quote on a storage container because of the lack of storage within the fire department. Myself, we use storage containers that are old boxes from trucks. I believe the police chief has one and has graciously offered that if we can make space for his quad, right?
Yes.
So we, you know, that price, that quote was for $3,100. I think we, if the police chief is gracious enough to give us his storage container, and we can make room for him in our storage for his quad, which I think is extremely doable, you can cut out the $3,100. I got an estimate on appliances, it was roughly $1,300 that needs to be replaced in the kitchen. The apparatus bay paint is $525. This, again, this is without labor, and I believe we reached out to the sheriff's department, so we're gonna give them a list.
Correct.
So we have had contact with the sheriff's department. We're gonna give them a list of these things and see what they can and cannot do for no labor. We do have to feed them.
Sure.
Hopefully, they're not too hungry. Estimate on the apparatus bay ceiling paint is roughly $350. Bunk room paint and walls and ceilings are roughly $150. The kitchen floor, I recommended a laminate, a hard laminate of $1,100 without labor, and the bunk room floor roughly $750 without labor. And if my math is correct, it's roughly $61,500 to reoccupy and make the station livable again.
What was that number again?
$61,500. Now, there was some discussion of how do we expand the building. I think that you're gonna have to expand the building at some point. My recommendation, and I don't have quotes as of today, is if you're looking at the building to the left, I think you should add a bay, and I think you should go up with the building and add a second floor if you were to keep the fire station. Other than tear it down and build a new one, I think that would suffice adding a bay, a two-deep bay, two vehicles deep, and going up with the second floor to put offices and bunk room on that. So you ask, how are we gonna come up with $61,500? I told you I'd come back to engine 3 at some point. This is when I'm coming back to engine 3. So the vehicle is being repaired. It has some fuel issues. I'm already, well, the department's already $600 something dollars into it. I suspect it's probably gonna be another $6,000 to fix it, but we can't sell it if it's not fixed. But the appraisal that I got from Brindle Mountain, they will give us $60,000 cash today for the vehicle, or we can advertise it for $85,000, which is the retail price, and hope that we get more than $60,000. But they have offered and given to me in writing that they will give us $60,000 cash for that vehicle if we wish to dispose of it. The other thing is the temporary trailer outside. I don't know what you paid for. I hear rumors it was around $40,000, the trailer that's out front. So my recommendation is once the fire department is reoccupied, that we sell that temporary trailer back to the person that sold it to you. I don't know what it's worth. I have no idea. When we get to that, we'll obviously negotiate a price to either outright sell it to somebody else, or sell it back to the company that sold it to you. So that's, that's all I've done in the few weeks that I've been here. I did have, I did request today, because one of the important things we've talked about is response times. So the automatic aid, we haven't thankfully, haven't had any requests for structure fires since I've been here, but the automatic aid is gonna address the firefighter crew on scene within the next amount of minutes. on scene within the next amount of minutes. The other thing is I requested right before, today, actually, earlier, and I just received it before I got here from the dispatch center, to see where our response times have changed, if any, since I've been here, and some of the changes, and I give the credit to the folks that are in the fire department that are pushing forward through this and really trying to assist me and, and assist the town in moving forward the department, whichever way you folks decide to go. So, I, I asked them to pull up every call that we got since May 1st. So, May 1st up until June 18th. Our response time average total for every type of call is roughly seven and a half minutes. And MRI, I believe, pointed out in issue number 111-6 was they wanted to standard operate, standard of cover of the town should be based on the NFPA 1710, 1720, the first unit arriving within eight minutes. So, that's as of a few minutes ago that I got from them. I haven't had time to really analyze it completely, but I trust that their numbers are relatively close. We have anywhere from fire alarm to commercial fire alarm, four-minute response time to inside investigation of one minute, public assist of four minutes, medical emergency seven minutes, so the, the average is 7.5. So, I would be happy to answer any questions if I can. If I can't, I won't. That's as far as I got. I think we're heading in the right direction. Again, I need some direction from the board on which direction you folks wish to go. Be happy to answer anything.
Any questions from the audience? Well, no?
Yes.
Amy?
Amy Curnan. I was curious, did the response times, does that, is that just when somebody call, and I don't know the proper terminology, when somebody calls in for an emergency, or is it also when somebody says, hey, can you come over and check out this event, or it's a scheduled event?
No, these are emergency response. These are emergency response times.
That's great.
Yep.
I mean, from my perspective, the fact that we could, we have to rehabilitate the station anyways. No matter which direction we go, we have to make it livable, and we've got to make sure that we straighten out the problems that we have. The fact that we don't have exhaust ventilation, I mean, things like that, that's, we're going to fix it. The fact that we can do it for not much money, it looks like, is great. I think that's super. I think the progress you've made in terms of coming in and stabilizing this department is fantastic. I have questions maybe around, from my perspective, I'm learning as I go through this, you know, sitting in for the fire technical meetings, talking to you offline. One of the things you made me aware of is that these standard operating procedures basically have to tell everybody what their part is when there's an event. Are we there with that so that we feel comfortable that when a crew shows up, everybody knows exactly what...
So, I think we're heading in that right direction, and that's why the initial six are more important than the rest. Not that they're not important, but these are really important. You need to check your truck to make sure you can get to the call. You need to wear your protective equipment so you don't get hurt and you can help citizens. You need to have accountability so you know who is actually at the fire scene. You have to have a way to communicate, and how we do that, rather than just yell over radio, we have procedures for that, so we put those in place. The incident command system, where do we fit into the incident command system? Who's in charge? Or is everybody there yelling out orders to everybody? There has to be an incident commander, there has to be a safety officer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we, we address those things. Also, we address if somebody gets into trouble. We certainly don't want a Plimpton Fire Department or any firefighter to be lost in a fire or get injured. It doesn't matter if it's Plimpton, Middleborough, or Boston. It's the most horrible thing in the world to have a firefighter lost or injured inside of a fire or a building collapse. If they don't know how to communicate that they're in trouble, and we don't have a procedure how to go get them, we're in trouble. So, those are the first six that I addressed. There's many others. I'm looking at 40 or 50 of them down the road. We have to strategically and, and, in order, put those standard operating guidelines in place. We need rules and regulations to tell them how they're supposed to operate, what's prohibited conduct, what's acceptable conduct, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, those are, that's all in there. Again, it's a draft form that's out to the, to the staff to give their, their feedback. If it's, if it's legitimate feedback, it'll end up in the, the standard operating guidelines or the rules and regulations. If it's something silly, it's not going to make it in there.
Sure. Go ahead, Mike.
So, first of all, thank you so much. It is an absolute pleasure to see a professional deal with all this. I think, I certainly, maybe the rest of us, thought what you've done already was maybe six months' worth of work in one month, and we are so appreciative to help getting us on the right track. So, a couple of questions. You're totally comfortable that Engine Three isn't needed or wouldn't be needed in...
Yes. I am, I'm very confident that the vehicle is, it has use, it has several uses, and I believe, talking to the folks that have been there for a while, it has morphed from one assignment to another, I think, three times. Is that accurate?
At least.
It, it does many things, but it doesn't do one well. So, and the amount of times that it's actually looking at response, the amount of times that it actually responded out, I, I think it's, I think the money would be better served somewhere else. I think you're paying for maintenance on the truck, obviously, from sitting, it's got some issues. It's 2007, it's already 11 years old. It has nothing for miles, there's 11,000 miles on it, very little hours on the engine, and I think to get good money for it while you can is a good idea. I think the Plimpton, I'm very confident that the Plimpton Fire Department can operate with the apparatus without that apparatus, and maybe another one or two. Haven't got that far yet.
So, a couple of other things. Absolutely don't want to make more work for you, but the list of your findings and recommendations on repairs, is it possible that we can get that?
Repairs on the building?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Sure. Again, I want to be clear, it's without labor for a lot of things. Obviously, the electrical and the fire alarm system, that is, that's labor included. The cabinets, the floors, the paint is without labor because we're hoping that the sheriff's department can help us. If not, then we have to figure in a labor cost to that. And, and I also want to be clear too, Mr. Trainer, that the, that amount of money is just to reoccupy the building and get it up and functioning. I think you have to start looking down the road for somewhat of expansion, either up and out, or something of that sort. It's very small, it's, it doesn't have much storage, it's going to be needed, it's, it needs to be looked at in the near future. But just to, which you folks tasked me with, is to see what it takes to reoccupy.
Right.
And that's what's in front of you right now, and I can give you a printed list. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to type it all. I typed half and wrote half because I'm on a little bit of a time schedule. I can only commit so much time to Plimpton, so...
So, I, it's been a debate for at least seven years on whether we renovate that building or build a new one, and we've gotten a lot of different opinions from a lot of different people. Your perspective on, on that dilemma?
So, I think to make a, an educated decision on that, I would have a structural engineer take a look at the structure itself. I'm not a structural engineer. I think if you had a structural engineer look at it, and they say that the structure is intact, I think it would benefit expanding on the current footprint of that building. Like I said, I think if you went up a second floor and added a bay or two on the other side, if you have that room, which I think you do, I did a quick measurement with a wheel, I think you do, I think that would be beneficial rather than tearing it down and building a new one. But I would refer to a structural engineer, I'm not a structural engineer, to look at. I don't know what the bones look like in between those walls and...
So, just a couple more, and I won't hog the question thing, but in a big sense, what do you see as still needed to do?
There's a lot more to do. I'd like to address all of those issues that I can. There is, I need to be clear, and I believe I've been very clear at the technical committee, I believe there's some technical committee folks here, that some of these standards that were pointed out, and they're very few, but there's some that were pointed out in the MRI study are just not obtainable for Plimpton or Middleborough or Cambridge. Adopting the entirety of NFPA 1500, I think there's one or two fire departments in the Commonwealth that actually meet that standard. It would cost the town of Plimpton a lot of money. But there is a lot of the portion of the 1500 we have to, the PPE, the personal protective equipment, the SCBA, many, many things that are very important, but to adopt the entire 1500 would be astronomical cost to the town of Plimpton or any other fire department, actually.
And I guess last one, which is the big ques, the big, big question. We are looking at the possibility of shared services. We're certainly looking at the possibility of rebuilding an independent department. I know you have opinions on that, and the practicality of rebuilding this department from your perspective.
So, to be clear, I just want to be clear on the question. The question is, can Plimpton Fire Department make, remain standalone fire department with a fire chief? Yes. Is there room for shared services? Yes. That's not a decision for me to make. I'm just presenting you with what I've found and what we can do, and that is for you folks to make that decision.
All right, so, then let me put it a slightly different way. Looking ahead...
You're not a lawyer, are you?
No.
Because that's what lawyers do to me. Let me ask it differently.
Best, yeah, yeah, it's the last one. Looking ahead five years, knowing what you know about how independent fire departments are going, staffing, kind, costs, do you envision that we could continue to be an independent department in five years without bankrupting the town?
Yes. I think if it's organized and run correctly, yes. I just, you know, even a shared services comes with a cost, so to staff that ambulance or that fire station, there's a cost to that, whether somebody else is doing it or you're doing it yourself, there's a cost to that. What the cost is, that's for you folks to decide, and decide whether what you're receiving for that price is worth the money, or is it worth the money that you currently spend on your fire department? Again, that is a decision for the, the board. So, that's as honest as I can be.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
I would just echo your sentiments here. Thank you so much. We were really in a very, very tough spot, and, and you have helped us turn the corner, and I'm so grateful for your help. But the, when you went through everything that we were missing or shortcomings, it just made me want to cry, but it, there's, I'm so hopeful that we have, that there's, you know, we've made, that we've turned the corner and that we're on the right path, and that we have a department that, that we can all be proud of, that we're definitely moving in the right direction.
The MRI kind of dinged us on recruitment, and it's your feeling that with the right programs, we can recruit the people that we need?
Yeah, so, I, you know, I know I've said this a thousand times, if I didn't say it once, that recruitment for small towns and retention is probably the most difficult thing. Recruitment, getting them in the door is probably not the most difficult, but the most difficult is the retaining them. And the simple reason is, the honest fact is, is the pay and the benefits, and the personnel, the type of person that wants to be a firefighter and EMS, they have a certain personality. They want to be busy and they want to do the work. If they come to a small town, they don't get the volume that they may be looking for. Again, you're going to find folks that want to be in the small town and stay there. You're going to find those folks. There's absolutely, those folks are there. And you have some folks that have been committed to Plimpton for a long time, and rightfully so, and they, you know, they may live in the town and have, they give back to the community type thing. But retention is always the issue for small towns. Halifax has the problem, Plimpton's going to have the problem, Carver continuously recruits as well. You have to have a program that is constantly recruiting people, and you can't take it personal if they come for a while and they get trained and they move on. You know, you never want to hold anybody back that wants to move forward. But if they're just coming here for a training ground, it's a whole different story, but you hit the nail on the head. If you have a department that you're proud of and it's professionally run and it, and it has a vision, and it's working towards and correctly training them, they, they'll want to stay longer. You can slow down the, the attrition, you're not going to stop it, you can slow it down. That's honestly the best-case scenario, is, is make a department that they want to be part of, be proud of, want to come to work, and want to serve the citizens of Plimpton. And if you can do that, and it's a healthy atmosphere, and it's a safe atmosphere, which is a huge factor, if they, if folks come to a department, I don't, I'm not going to say Plimpton, but anywhere, and they feel unsafe and they feel there's no leadership, they're not going to stick around because their lives are in jeopardy. It's not, you know, this type of job, you could be here in five minutes and gone in the next. So, it's really important to provide a safe place, the right equipment, and the right training, and leadership. If that's, if that's there, you're going to recruit the people that want to stay for a while, and they may be looking to move on. It's just the nature of the beast. And the big departments have the same issue, just not as bad. They're looking for the better benefits, they're looking for the more volume. Some folks may want more fires, they go somewhere that has a lot of fires. Some places may want more EMS, and they want to go there. It, you know, there's no way to tell that other than a psychological evaluation. So, I think, to answer your question, you can slow it down, you're not going to stop it.
But they're, in effect, whether we went shared services or standalone, they're...
You're still going to have...
Same issue.
You're still going to have that issue. I, I know for a fact Halifax has the same issue. They, you know, they recruit people, they have a little bit better package deal. Folks come in and they, there's some that move on, some that will stay there for a long time, if not forever. I know there's a couple people that are still there from when I was there 15 years ago. So, you know, you got to make it attractive, and you got to make it safe, and you got to make it something that you're proud of. If they're not proud of it, they're not going to stick around.
Is that benefit package or, or pay package out of whack severely, or...
I haven't dove really deep into that. The pay scale seems pretty appropriate. I think we got to look at benefits and whatnot. I think we have to take a look at that in the future. If you're looking for five or 10 years down the road, I think you really have to seriously look at that, and the cost factor of that as well.
Sure.
You, you really have to look at your staffing levels too, and how you can staff it. You don't want to burn people out either. You have two people that are doing the majority of the hours, it's difficult, and after a while, it, it gets old, so...
Yeah.
I mean, those are the things we have to look at down the road. You asked what else needs to be done, that's one, there's many others, but something to look at.
In terms of equipment, like the ambulance, et cetera, are we in fairly good shape?
Ah, fairly good shape. There's one ambulance that's going to need to be replaced, I would guess, next year or the year after. I know the MRI study mentioned re, reconfiguring, in other words, buying a chassis and putting the box on there. The box is too old, the, the back of the truck is, is too old to do that, to remount it. I wouldn't suggest doing that. I think, I think you could get another year or two out of that vehicle. It's actually in pretty good shape. It passes vehicle inspection, it passes OEMS inspection, which is probably the most important. So, I would, I would continue to run that vehicle until such time that it's, becomes either a safety issue, or OEMS says that needs to be taken out of service.
But you would have two ambulances?
Yes, you always have to have two, I, you know, recommend it because if you have a breakdown and the truck's down, you need a replacement. And also, back-to-back calls, the Plimpton Fire Department does a great job at, at calling back and restaffing the second ambulance.
Okay.
They've been doing an excellent job of that.
All right. Chief, when we complete the firefighter one and two training for the 11 individuals that still need the training, are we going to implement a training program where we make sure every year that we're doing training so that we continue to grow and, and become better?
So, I've instituted a 10-month program with, I always leave a couple of months so, in case something interesting that we need to move around. That schedule has been put out as well to the staff. I'm not sure if I have a copy of that, but it, so, my biggest thing for Plimpton is I don't know where they are and without the, with the incomplete personnel files. Some have certifications, some don't. Thank you, sir. Some have certifications in there, some don't. So, what I, what I propose is a 10-month schedule that we go back to the basics, start at the basics, and every single firefighter needs to have an evaluation on each and every subject that we do, and sub-subject, that's through the, IFST, the International Fire Safety Training Association. Their tried-and-true skill forms that the academies use, NFPA uses. So, each and every individual that does the, each one of these trainings will be evaluated. If they're deficient, they have to go back and do it until they are efficient at it. That will become part of their... they have to go back and do it until they are efficient at it. That will become part of their personnel file. So, this will be ongoing. After these 10, we'll continue on. And each one of these, every other one will have a standard operating guideline training, so we'll review the standard operating guideline, then we'll actually practice it. There's no evaluation form for that, standardized one, but we can evaluate whether they actually grasp the concept or not, which they're very simply written, they're easy to follow. It's in an algorithm-type thing, so. So, that, I don't know if that answers your question?
It does.
Yes. So, this should be ongoing and continue on.
And this would be done internally?
Correct. Yes. And obviously, the Fire Academy has impact classes as well. Again, I leave room for that. If an interesting class comes up, we try to insert that in as well.
Are we comfortable that we have the plans in place for our two largest businesses, Cisco and Hubble?
I can't, I wouldn't answer that right now until our pre-plans are done. The ones, the program that I've instituted that the firefighters have in their possession now, once we have those pre-plans done for those two, I can give you a much better evaluation. I personally been through Cisco. I haven't been through Hubble or Light Control.
Okay.
But they have sent me some plans for sprinkler system upgrade, so we've looked at it at that level. But to answer you confidently, I would wait till my pre-plan was done.
Okay.
The firefighters will be doing that, and that obviously will come to me. It will be in a written form. It will be in a book on each frontline piece of apparatus. Except they get a call to Cisco, they just flip to Cisco, they'll tell them important information about that facility, where all the utilities are, and what actions they should be if it's a fire, a hydrogen leak, or ammonia leak, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Excellent.
So, I, to be honest, to be confident, I'd wait till that plan is done.
Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Well, back when I started on Plimpton Fire Department in 2000, we had to sign a contract. We went, they put us through EMT school, and that was the first class that we had over there. We had to sign a contract that we were going to stay with Plimpton Fire for two years. We couldn't just use it as a stepping stone and then walk away. And that seemed to work really well back then. And I just, is that something that could be done again, to keep people around?
So, I would defer that to legal counsel. There's been case on that specific thing, for paramedics. There's case study on that, that they signed a contract that they would stay. It was argued, and this may be a little bit different than an EMT, but I would defer that to town councils to answer that question.
Yes, sir.
To get back to the maintenance of the building over there, we get out of water on this building. We don't have our own separate system. That's what also be put in on that building. A well, an eight-inch well, not a six-inch well, an eight-inch well. Because if this one, you can't draw water out here like we had last this past year, we were out of water, we had no water.
I didn't know.
Our own generator, I don't think Lance knew this.
I did not, no.
And if we have our own generator system, we're all on a separate-
We'll add it to the list. Other questions? Well, from my perspective, this has been great. I guess the question is, where do we go? We've been talking to Halifax. The original intent was that, I believe they were going to come back this week.
The 20th?
Yeah. That appears to be slipping, and so we don't have a date. And at least my feeling personally is, we have to set a direction with the idea that we can change it if circumstances come that, you know, we need to do it. But I think we should be looking at moving to the standalone department. I think we should be taking your advice and implementing the things you're talking about. I think we have the opportunity to have a great department, and I think maybe what's been missing in the past is the leadership, and we need to solve that. So, that's where I'm at.
So, one thing I'd like to point out that's been mentioned to somebody that's been on the Plimpton Fire Department for a while, and is very valuable to the process, that we have to stop the, Plimpton Fire seems to start to head in the right direction, and then it stops. So, we, if that's the case, we need to make sure that we continue that progress, and not to start something and then let it stop. So, I'd hate to have, you know, we get our things going in the right direction, and then it just fall off the end of the earth, and-
I agree.
It's the end of it. It spends some of the concern. Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
I think, you know, at least from my perspective, and having served on the Finance Committee in the past, it was always that we never knew enough about the operation, and the chiefs at the time were never able to, in a sense, educate us. They would come in and say they need something. We'd say, well, we don't need that, you know, because it's a cost thing, not understanding the operation. I think that's what behooves us as the committee here to make sure that we understand, and that, you know, all the things you're talking about, we move forward, and it just doesn't drop off a cliff. Amy?
I know that there was a committee forum to look at all the different variations of what it could be, standalone, combined, or takeover, you know, and then variations in between. That committee never really met. So, I find it interesting that that's your opinion. I'd like to hear the other opinions of the BOS members as well, since that committee really never meant to give their opinion.
Well, I support what you're saying, but I would like to see their proposal before I make a full commitment. And we don't have any numbers, so it's all been just kind of estimates at this point. We've done our numbers, and we have an idea of what it's going to cost us to be where we need to be. If we're going to be standalone, we've got solid numbers as to what it's going to cost us. The question now is, what's Halifax's proposal? So, and I don't know if the proposal is negotiable, or if this is the proposal, it is what it is, take it or leave it. So, until we get that back, I feel like, for me, it's premature to commit to any scenario, until we fully explore, finish the process that we started.
My other concern is, if we have to expand the station, what's that going to cost us?
That would be the next step.
And I wanted to just add, and that was why I raised my hand earlier, so the, up to code for 1974, that's when it was built. If we do, and I'm sure Chief Benjamina knows this as well, if you do significant renovation, it needs to be updated to today's code. So, that cost also needs to be brought in there. And I guess I would follow up with Mr. Slickman Russo, your opinion.
Well, a lot to say, but sort of in brief, I was and kind of remained quite interested in the shared model. I think I'm a little disappointed already with the process and our intent, knowing that Chief Benjamina would like a sense of direction fairly quickly, and we would. I think we've had a little bit of frustration with the process with Halifax, and it's going very slowly, and we're getting a little bit of mixed messages. So, I'm still open to hearing what they have to say, and I still see that maybe as the more creative approach. At the same time, I am utterly impressed with the amount of work done already, and I envisioned, as I said before, that what the chief has succeeded in in a month is, I thought was going to take six months for a year. And I think he'd done a wonderful job in showing us that there is the possibility of a really excellent, independent standalone department. I will admit the other piece that I think has come up with a technical, fire technical committee, and meetings with Halifax, and further discussions, is the degree to which you all that work for this department really take pride, or want to take pride, in a really well-run department. And this is a little highfaluting language, but I really see that as the path to getting this done, and I think is an exciting path, that we can build that kind of department. Plimpton in itself is really small and relatively modest in our financial abilities, but I think we do amazing things with what we do, and this might be one more opportunity where we could do amazing things and have an amazing department with under 3,000 citizens. So, I think we have two potentially good options, and I hope in the next couple weeks, we can hear from Halifax and get a sense of if there's something there or not. If there isn't, if it's not practical, then I'd be totally in favor with just, as much as it was a nice idea of getting rid of it, and then getting on with the work.
I agree with you, Mark. I mean, I think we need to set a timeline. We need to make a decision, and we can't just keep, you know, going through the motions. And if they don't give us a proposal, then we need to go based on the information that we have. So, you know, I would like a date to have it, and then we'll make a decision maybe a week later, because we need to let the chief know which way we're going with this, because if, you know, all in, if that's what we're going, we need to be prepared.
I will assist you in whatever direction you go in. I'm not suggesting one or the other, or one over the other. I'll assist you in whatever direction you go, but I'm going to have to start decreasing the amount of hours I'm spending here, but I don't want the work to stop, and I don't think it's going to be for naught, because you're going to have the system running, whether you share services or you run by itself. I think it's important, either way, the concern I have is if it's, if it's a, I don't know if it was Amy that said all or nothing, if it isn't all or nothing, and they, you go with Halifax, a lot of these things will already be in place. So, I mean, it's not going to hurt to have them in place now, but just know that if that's the case, that it's redundant type of thing that would go away.
And I think we understand that risk, that there's a possibility that some of this has already been taken care of, but I think in general, we feel like the positive momentum is something we just want to keep going.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
Yeah, and it's a great exercise for this department, you know, to come together and look at these.
They've been very, you know, the department's been very cooperative. I hope they're liking what's happening. They don't, they don't. They've been very cooperative and very helpful in getting a lot of this stuff done, and we're moving forward.
Wasn't there a joint force life and meeting scheduled with Halifax on the 27th, or is that not?
Halifax felt they needed more time, and that's been one of the issues, is that the date keeps moving out. They originally presented us with a calendar that looked like, because they, they are, they do their taxes quarterly, where we do them semi-annually. And because, you're shaking? Huh?
We do them quarterly.
No. I'm sorry, we, by- We're doing them quarterly, right?
We do them, yeah.
Yeah, okay. They had an October deadline, and so they said by October 1st, we have to have certain things in place, and they sort of figured their dates backwards, saying, okay. Since that, that has now slipped, and that's why, right now, we're talking July 9th, but we haven't got a firm date on that. So, my headset has been, we need to set a direction with the idea that when Halifax comes in, we'll evaluate it. We know where we are now, we think. We know cost-wise what we think it would run to, what it would cost to run a department. We think through Chief Benjamina's expertise, operationally, we understand what has to be done. And if we go forward, at least we have a path now that says, these are the things that have to be in place. And if we get, Halifax comes in in the next two weeks and says, this is what we want to do with Plimpton, we'll evaluate it. If it makes sense, we'll do it.
I was going to ask the chiefs of that. Oh, in the next couple of weeks, what are your priorities now? You've gotten so much done. What's on your horizon?
And if you get a price on the, for the apron, and a confirmed price on the floor, of the apparatus floor, continue, hopefully get the feedback by next Friday on the SOGs and the rules and regulations. Make any changes that need to be done that are relative to Plimpton's operations. Well, July 1st, the rules and regulations will go into effect with the changes. Standard operating guidelines, soon as any changes that are made, those will be in effect as well. General orders of day-to-day operations will be issued soon as well. And I'm going to continue addressing as many of those issues that have been brought up in the Technical Committee. I don't, I haven't met with the Oversight Committee, so I don't know what the concerns are there, other than what's in the MRI study, which I've looked at to a certain extent.
So, the Oversight Committee, just to clarify this, was to address the shared service with whatever, didn't have to be Halifax, but Halifax seemed the most likely, because once we talked to the other towns, you know, they were the ones that were most interested, to bring in the people who have vested interests beyond the fire department, such as Cisco, to make sure that we were hitting all the right things that had to be addressed. Without a proposal, we don't, you know, we need a proposal so we can start to bring that, those people together to say, okay, now, what are the things that are missing, if they're missing? Are there any issues in there?
I think the biggest one that would have to be negotiated is the governance of how it's going to be run.
Right.
Who's in, who is in charge of what, and who owns what, and how are they going to operate?
Right.
So, the governance part of that, I think, is probably going to be the most difficult part of that whole process. Maybe not. Maybe the governance is already figured out. I don't know that, I'm not aware of that. To me, that's what I'd be looking at.
And getting that through legal is going to take quite a long time.
Quite possibly.
Probably beyond the cutoff for their, to set their tax rate.
Absolutely.
Chief, are you confident that we could continue progressing as we should with, if you were to pass the baton, if we were to get a chief in here?
Yeah, so I think, we discussed this briefly, but I, you know, the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs could assist you in, if you chose to go and hire a fire chief, I think the town would have to decide on what credentials and what criteria, education, experience, et cetera. Once you decide on what you're looking for in a fire chief, we can, I can personally bring this to the board at the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs, and get together an assessment committee, and review resumes, et cetera, and then do an assessment center and narrow it down. If you get 10 or 15 applicants, or five, narrow it down to what you're looking for. You want two applicants in front of you, you want three. We could confidently give you three eligible candidates, provided you get the applications, and help you in that process. We won't choose the chief for you, but I, you know, I'm not speaking for Plymouth County Fire Chiefs, but we've done it in the past. I would present that to them as well, and assist you in choosing a chief.
One of the things, I believe you mentioned, I think you started it, was that we should do an operational review, say, once a year at least. I mean, we do a management review for the auditors. We should be doing the same thing for the fire department.
Yeah. My recommendation, I think the question was posed, how do we know if they're doing their job?
Right.
In the past, that you maybe did not know if it was getting done or not. I think that if you brought them in twice a year, whoever it may be, and asked for a state of the department, how's the budget, how's the apparatus, how's the personnel, and in detail, and what the vision is for the next half of the year, what their goals are, and set goals, and, you know, set the department goals as well as the town's goals.
And your association does that, right?
We, no, we don't do that part of it, no.
Who would do that?
I would suggest you folks do that.
No, no, I mean, as far as coming in, who would do the operational review?
No, I would ask the town, the selectmen, ask certain questions about the budget. You obviously bring in your accountant and your treasurer, and make sure that the budget's on track, and I usually-
Right. After the auditors have written the management report, I guess what I'm asking is, who would have the fire expertise to come in and do the review?
Well, I honestly don't think you need the fire expertise. I think you need to know, ask for the state of the personnel. How's the personnel doing? Do we have any injuries? Do we have people that, how many people? The retention issue. Ask where the budget is. What's the state of the apparatus? Do we have any major breakdowns or maintenance issues? Vehicles coming up for repair, or are they coming up for, to get rid of them, or, you know, replacement? I think you- I think you could certainly do that yourself and I do suggest that it's always a good thing to reach out to your neighbors, your surrounding towns and ask them, you know, with, with knowledge of the fire chief and tell them that, you know, ask them what they think of the Plimpton Fire Department. They'll certainly tell you.
Well, and we'll have a better idea when we dive into the documents you're creating as to what the standard operating procedures are, the rules and regs, so that we learn more about the department, how it's supposed to be run, so that we can ask the right questions too. So we'll learn more about the department.
Amy, you had questions?
Yeah, I would just love to see a third party do that, at least for the first few years, because I think that's why we got into this, that the board of selectmen, as well as, you know, police citizens, we don't know the nuts and bolts of it. And so to bring somebody in that really knows it, like an MRI, on a miniature scale, would probably be warranted for the first few years.
Certainly worth looking at.
Yeah, absolutely.
I totally agree because we have done, or tried to do those reviews in the past and we were hearing really only one voice and we probably need to hear other voices.
This is Eve.
Wouldn't it be valuable to get the opinion of a structural engineer before we make our decision? Because what if that building is not structurally sound and we need to tear down?
Well, we, yeah, we, we can get somebody in pretty quick, I think, but even if we were to go with Halifax, the station would be used, so we at least gotta make it fit for the immediate, you know, the very, yep.
But I'm saying...
And that's the 60,000-plus labor that you were talking about.
Yeah, we should get a structural engineer.
Yeah, we should be able to do that quickly.
Either way, it's still recommended.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, because we do need to get rid of the trailer, get everybody back in the building, but the building has to be structurally sound for us to, to do this, so, yeah.
My guess is that it is structurally sound, but I'm not a structural engineer and I wouldn't put my name on it.
Okay.
But I have asked through Ms. Dennehy for the design engineer that's working on the police station to come over and get that. I haven't...
Correct, we haven't received a response on that, so we may be better off seeking outside sources.
Let's seek outside. We don't wanna mess around with this, yeah.
Any other questions before we wrap up?
Just one, are, are you clonable?
I hope not.
Oh, Chief, you mentioned that you're gonna be reducing your hours?
Well, I'm gonna have to shortly, so I, yeah, I don't wanna, you know, stop helping.
I know, you've got other commitments in your own department to run.
Yeah, and a son that's going to military college very shortly, so, I, you know, so I only got a month or two left of this time, so. I, I'm committed to helping you, I'll do whatever I can, you know, I'm not saying my thing's the only answer or the right answer, I'm just trying to do what needs to be done in the immediate, immediately and try to get the department where they should be and these folks are doing a good job at it, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. You've been a godsend to help us through this, so, thank you.
Yeah, you and the department. Thank you all so much for all your efforts, because this is, this has not been an easy process and, um, thank you, thank you.
Is the fire technical committee, are we still on for Wednesday night or?
No, we didn't have it scheduled because we thought, at least...
I did get it run.
It's posted.
I thought it was for the joint meeting.
Yeah, no, we, we discussed it last Wednesday, we did post it for selectmen, I mean, we can cancel it.
Well, we were hoping to have the proposal by then.
Well, the fire tech, Chairman's not here, so it's, but yes, Elise is the vice, I guess.
We posted the meeting for Wednesday night because I thought the board of selectmen were gonna meet with the fire technical committee just to review next steps, I think, direction and next step.
Well, and now we do have some steps for the building that we need to address so that we can do some implementation of the plan.
Yeah, okay.
All right, great.
So we'll do it?
We'll do it, let's do it.
Okay.
Let's keep moving.
It's for 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay, great.
Just gotta push your table back.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, what else we have on the agenda?
Okay.
So, thanks everyone with fire.
Thank you, thank you.
We have other things we'll go to.
Thank you all for coming, very much.
Chris, you got your hair cut, I didn't recognize you.
I did the one mission buzz off for people.
Wonderful, wonderful.
It's a great summer cut.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Rick, for coming.
We're not that much of a draw when we get done with fire, right?
No, we're pretty boring, that's okay.
What do we got left?
So we already did correspondence.
Do we have town admin update?
Would you like an update?
Yes.
Yes. So, I had met with John Willamson and John and Mark, not both in their capacity as Board of Selectmen members, but from CPC and BOSS and, I'll just bring them up, so that she's aware of the status. So we, we met...
It doesn't really project voices, it's for the camera only.
So we met regarding the old townhouse and some of the work that needs to be done and I finally talked to a live person with the COMBIES program through the state, which we're gonna have to advertise, some of these projects as part of the bidding process. So I finally spoke to a live person who was very helpful and they're working on getting me set up with my own account. There's some confusion about Dale's account and sort of a glitch on their end, so I explained to somebody today that he's no longer an employee.
So they're gonna eliminate Dale in any case, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so he'll be taken out of the system and they're working on getting me set up with an account so that I'll be able to post to it.
Right.
So now that that part's out of the way, I'm going to take my first crack at putting together some of the documents and then I will circulate them to John Willamson and also to the two of you, not in your BOSS capacity, but CPC and, and that.
This is related to the CPC project?
For the old townhouse. Some of it needs to go out to bid, so, given the estimates that we've received. For the highway superintendent position, we have the finalists scheduled for next week, for June 25th.
Yep.
John and I have been working with Michael, our IT expert, on an IT master plan for the upcoming fiscal year. So he's scheduled to come in tomorrow during the day. Now he's saying probably late morning and he'll be coming in to meet with the various town departments and get an idea of any difficulties that they're having, but also kind of wish list items, ideas for moving ahead into the next year. And then we need to look at what we have budgeted for that and come up with some, with a plan that, that I think will kind of take us to that next level for next year. Part of the discussion that John and I had with him was that even though we're taking positive steps, everything's been done very piecemeal, kind of bit by bit and just sort of fixing issues as they come up, as opposed to really planning ahead and, you know, what are some of the things that we need as far as being a functional townhouse and also what's within our means cost-wise and from a technology standpoint, kind of separating wants from needs and what are some things that we could do even in the relative short term to accomplish some of those goals. So we're working on that and I think between both John and I, we'll be holding him to, to measurable goals and deadlines and everything, so, I thought that was a positive.
Good luck.
And then my last update, and then I'm actually going to kind of turn it over to Mark, but I prepared the public hearing notice, it has not been sent anywhere, but I did prepare a draft public hearing notice regarding the Atwood piece, so I'll turn it over to Mark if he could update people on that.
Yeah, so the main thing, I, we'll put that on this, on the agenda with your permission next week and I'll give you an update overall. There's a lot going on, there's a working group that's meeting, CPC is meeting tomorrow night, Open Space met last week, there've been a couple site inspections and, so I'll give you more details on that. The main thing is the, the, part of the clock requires us to have a public hearing, so I wanted to get that on the schedule and I wanted to make sure that worked with everyone up here. So we're looking at July 16th for the date for that and Liz was good enough to check with town council for us and get the wording on that. This is one of those ones with the regulatory stuff that we just gotta get it exactly right. So knowing everyone will be around the 16th, we'll aim for the public hearing and maybe we'll go more into a timeline next week, but potentially a decision that night, if not that night, certainly two weeks later, we'd have to make a decision.
What's interrupted?
It is August, I believe it's August 9th, either August 9th or 10th. I think we have to make our decision quite a little bit before that because there's some work with the deed if we decide to go ahead and I, just because contingencies might come up and because it is a drop dead one, I, I wouldn't wanna do it any later than the 16th.
Okay.
But I, I think maybe that will be on the agenda, the whole project will be, ought to be on the agenda for all of our next meetings, just so we can all get fully up to date.
And the only options are, we either, we're gonna try to purchase a property or we decide that we're not interested, right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what it comes down to. I, there's the, there is the option of assigning the option to a nonprofit organization, but I, I don't think that's tenable in this situation.
Okay.
We're awaiting some reports and I'll talk to, I'll talk more about that next week, not the least of which, we have a hydrologic engineer that's taking a look at the information and getting a sense on water issues. And I'll talk about that more next week.
What time is the hearing on the 19th or 16th?
We made it for six...
Six o'clock.
So it's very start, okay.
Assuming that that's okay with, with the board.
Yeah, and, I mean, we hope a lot of people will come, I mean, we need, this will be the one to hear from citizens, yea or nay, and really educate us and let us know how people are feeling about the thing.
So we'll be talking money then, we'll have reports from all these different committees?
Reports, we'll have a plan, I, wouldn't, I, I mean, the question that night or, or the, really the topic of the public hearing is whether we'll exercise the right of first refusal or not. By then, we would have a plan if we, an overall plan of funding, it would be the form of multi, multi-funding sources along the way. We might not have every number pinned down yet because we would have 90 days after that, we'd have to go to town meeting to authorize that, but there, there will be a full presenting of what we know about the project and the pros and cons and moving forward.
Terrific.
Okay.
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 Got it on my calendar.
Back that way.
So that's, that's updates.
Might as well, yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Goals for the coming year, economic development, I don't think we have anything that we're working right now. Financial management, we need to, I've talked to Barbara about...
Review the plan.
Yeah, review the management, the auditor's management report. We also need to load the forecasting tool that was built by the Collins Group.
Oh, that hasn't been done yet?
Well, it's still got the old information we need, now that we've got town meeting over, because we've got a lot of things that we're looking at, that we've gotta make sure that we've got monies, that we don't start extending ourselves into something we can't afford. Public safety?
The building moves ahead, it's one of those ones that every day you look over there, there's something new. We've had a couple challenges on the height of the cement over there with some disagreement along the way. Our project manager assures us we're on target.
Are we okay?
The architect has signed off on it, the engineer has signed off on it, there are some town citizens that have concerns, but ultimately, the experts have signed off on it.
Okay, grants. We talked about reaching out to Ernie Horn under the grant that was done for the fire EMS. So I sent him an email and he's willing to make himself available whenever we want him. So, once we get a proposal, then we can see where we stand.
Okay.
Okay. We need volunteers. Anybody wants to step forward?
Well, Elise is gone, isn't she?
We have talented people right here in this room, right now.
You know...
I think they're all volunteers, too.
I think they are, too. Can we go back to grants for a second?
Sure, sure.
I would love to know why we didn't get awarded that vehicle exhaust system grant.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, too, and I...
And...
One of the things that they put forward was because it wasn't the station people living in, they didn't meet the criteria at the time. So each year when the AFG puts out their grants, they're giving up a parameter and say, okay, this is this year's buzzwords. I'm sure another year it's something, it was written probably, we could probably get...
But it seems like that's something that's real high on the priority list.
The last couple of years, they've been handing those out left and right.
They, and they never do these like interim, it's annually?
No, I think they usually start, the deadline's like November, it's a lot kilter from the fiscal budget when, when they start putting them out.
Would they ever do it where it's a reimbursement? Okay.
Usually it's a matching rate of five to 10%.
Okay.
Like this year, they went for a washing machine and dryer, for washing the protective clothing and it looks like pretty good chance they're gonna get that.
So there, we're gonna get a grant for a washer and dryer?
There hasn't been a D A John letter yet that I've heard of saying no, when, in some of the towns have their D A John letters, they're not getting what they applied for.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that.
And technology, I think we talked about in terms of the master plan, we're gonna be working with Michael.
I just, I have one thing on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sort of a, a quick anecdote, there was a public official in this town who was very connected with the town and with the townhouse for many decades, who mentioned a couple weeks ago at one or another meeting that she felt quite uninformed of what was going on in town. And out of a sort of informal discussion that came out of that was the consideration of a weekly Facebook update from us in one form or another, or maybe from Liz.
Just update on all the things going on?
Yeah.
Because we try to put relevant things, like if there's a, an important date coming up, there's also a ton of information goes on the website.
There does, but, you know, it's a little scattered and I, this actually happened to me to some intent in my sabbatical year away from the board. I mean, you know, I read the newspaper, I read Facebook a little, but stuff was kind of scattered and, you know, just even a list of the projects that we're working on or any major developments for the week, I just wanna plant the seed and I, I don't know who would do that, I don't wanna make more work for you, but it seems like a, a one unified place or even if it just referred to, well, there was an article in the paper that described something, just one place is the starting point to kind of be informed on what we're doing.
All right, let's explore that a little further and see.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, good, okay, thank you.
With a little news, newsletter, maybe a weekly newsletter?
I mean, actually, the interesting part of it would having to be, I mean, we, we deal with controversial issues and it would be easy to lean too much one way or the other, but, you know, just...
Just the facts, ma'am.
Yeah. You know, an example is the, this rumor that's been going around a little bit on a, on 40B development and nobody's seen...
Where? What's the rumor?
Oh, here we go, see, now it started again, more questions.
Well, I'm not on Facebook, I do read the paper.
Yep. Well, it's been about a day, I mean, I've probably had 10 citizens either write me or ask me, I'm sure John has this...
About what?
What's going on?
What's going on with?
So there's a lot of land that runs behind Maple Street, it's about 270 acres, that might be proposed for a 40B site. It's all rumor, nothing's come into the town, there's no paperwork.
The selectmen have heard nothing, the planning board has heard nothing.
This is why we need to get our...
Because on Facebook, it must be true.
Absolutely, it wouldn't be on if it wasn't, but this is why we need to get our comprehensive permit regs done.
I know.
We need to get it done. We've already got our plan, we need to get our regs done.
We were talking about that this morning.
We submitted, yeah. Keep that.
We did.
Get, we've gotta get this done.
And adopted.
Done and adopted.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get it, let's try to get this done.
Tomorrow.
Maybe by the end of July, there's not that much more to this, is there?
No, she did a very good job even at the first draft.
Yeah, I bet it, it looks really nice.
It was pretty all encompassing even that first draft.
Just a small suggestion.
It's not like it was, it wasn't missing anything and there were really no blanks to be filled in, it was more just clarifying a few things.
Okay.
One thing on technology... One thing on technology. We got computers through the state grant, and we had people assigned to each one that we asked for. One of the people decided that what they had was sufficient, so that we had one computer. We're going to, where that cabinet is over there? We're setting it up so that when people come in, say, any guest presentations, we can do it through that, but also we're setting it up so that the selectmen will have privilege with a separate password to go in and be able to get into the network.
So, what, are you going to get a laptop?
Uh, no, it's actually a computer that we actually have.
We'll have the tower. We can lock it in the cabinet.
It'll be in the cabinet.
Okay.
And then it'll be almost like a self-serve kiosk for the current board members, but also for people making presentations, because it seems like there have been a few compatibility issues recently with people with the Wi-Fi, and, so that'll be a direct link.
Well, that's nice, because then, like, the library wanted to come in here and show a movie. They could throw the CD in the computer and...
Sure.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we think that that's good use of it.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Dates to remember. So, we're meeting next, next week.
We've got the interviews for the candidates and all the appointments we need to make. It's going to be a busy day.
Yeah. So, Wednesday is the fire technical committee. July 4th, the townhouse is closed, so there'll be no, no Board of Selectmen meeting.
No, that's an off week for us.
Yeah, and then we'll come back on the following week.
The ninth.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Rants and raves.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Lance Benjamino.
Minutes?
Oh, we don't have the minutes.
We don't have minutes for...
But we did have the executive session.
No.
Or the, or the meeting we had on the 18th.
Just a reminder that that executive session, we haven't approved yet. We probably have to wait for an executive session, maybe to discuss it, but that was 5:21, and that's an important one.
Right. So, I think we're waiting for that one, but you gave us minutes from the meeting we attended with fire technical, so, and I thought those looked good.
Which is June 13th.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I make a motion they be approved as...
As written.
As written.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the regular session ones, Breo's us.
And, and so, we should just add back to our list the minutes, the executive session of 5:21.
5:21, okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, so now I'll do my, my rave, and my rave is Lance Benjamino. And, um, for me personally, we were in a pretty dark place, and I wasn't feeling real hopeful about our direction, and I'm feeling very hopeful now, and so grateful for his, all of his work, and that the department has embraced him, and are implementing his suggestions, and it's, there's been a lot of change in a very short period of time, so, you know, amazing job to him and great job to the department to, to pull in together and, and realizing that we do have a common goal, and that we're on the same team, and, I mean, it just, for a while, it was, was not...
Wasn't fun.
It wasn't fun. It wasn't fun, but you know what? You go through hard times, and there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and it's all worthwhile, so is, I feel like we're, we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, I'll echo that, Lance, but also in general, the power of competent leadership and how much can get done, and I, you know, the right person at the right time. Sometimes we have fine people, but the skill set just doesn't match the situation at the moment, and thank God Lance came along, because we have an absolute perfect match, and I, I think, yeah, exactly that, the hope that with the right person, if we go the route of an independent department, that with the right person, we could move ahead very successfully.
So, I'm going to kind of rave, which I've done before, but I happen to go to a, an event at the library for the old people, where the person who had the health problem here showed up, and he reiterated how he felt he's alive because of the competence of the, the fire department that responded. And I also want to give credit to Brigitte and Christine Kelly for making sure that right off they knew, get those people in here, and then he was just glowing when he was talking about them.
Absolutely, and if you're going to have an event right next to the fire station, it's really good for our response to...
It really is. Okay, so, with no further business, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next week.